And epic turn of events. We once again find ourselves here in the studio on Tuesday at nine AM.
Wow, this has never happened before ever. What's happening?
Needs to be written about.
Needs to go down in the walls of history of the Dakotan.
Yeah, I feel like that's what this entire episode is gonna be.
It's about to be.
What's happening?
Yeah. Who am I? Why am I here?
It'd be, it feels like Bill Belichick on the sidelines in the second quarter. What is happening?
Starts out like seven, seven and all the stuff.
Zero, man. They got to dominate. This is, yeah.
And all of a sudden it's thirty to seven at halftime and.
What is happening?
It's college.
What is life?
Shows UNC ain't that powerhouse college school.
You can't go get a.
Also read an article yesterday about the recruitment efforts at UNC over the summer. Apparently it was just all kinds of chaotic and like chickens running around with their heads cut off.
Well, that's what that article said.
That's what it's, yeah, it's, I can take it with a grain of salt, but.
I heard that his plan, they had like seventy transfers.
Yeah.
It's insane, bro.
The transfer portal is wild in college football.
Yeah, so, but they said.
That's a different conversation.
That is a different conversation. We can go there if you want. I have strong opinions on it. But they said that that's not the plan for every year. I know that everyone was curious about this. This is like in my, just the, been the talk.
Yes, Bill Belichick and UNC's.
Right, it's Tar Heel blue, man. There's something about it that grabs the attention of every Duke fan hoping that they lose.
Hey, I'm occasionally called Coach K, so.
Yeah.
There's some vague.
You wanna be called Coach O, though.
Oh, yeah, Ed O, go draw your own.
Or drawn from the LSU Fighting Tigers pulling off the upset in Death Valley. It's not very many, very often that they pull off the upset at all.
They normally get upset the last few years, but Brian Kelly finally.
Let alone in Death Valley.
Exactly. But hey, Clemson's not what they were like six, seven years ago either.
Yeah, I mean, who is really right now?
Ohio State?
They are not what they were. They actually won a national championship.
Yeah, they were winning national championships like six, seven years ago. Okay, they were getting to them. How about that?
Yeah.
But anyways, welcome in to this edition.
Dude, it's the first big college football.
It is.
People should be.
It was opening weekend. Yeah, U N D almost beat Kansas State. They lost by three points on like a game winning touchdown by Kansas State.
Yeah, dude, they had a chance to win that game. And I know you, everyone says that. No, they had the ball with two minutes left in the game and they couldn't get a first down.
Yeah.
If they got that first down, they probably win. And then, and then on the drive to win the game for Kansas State, U N D players were dropping like flies. They were getting hurt.
Just getting.
Which is terrible because it was a two minute drill offense. And so they're, they're getting hurt stopping the clock.
Yeah, and so it's giving, giving them more time. That's disappointing.
It was sad. It was just like a terrible turn of events against them.
Kansas State lost their first game like in the, what, week zero when they were overseas. They played Iowa State. That's right.
Oh, that's brutal. So they're one on one?
Yeah.
That actually counted? That's brutal. Who would wanna do that?
And they're a ranked team.
Yeah, who would wanna go to, dude?
Vikings go to Ireland.
Who does that? Like, I wonder what, yeah, that's different. And the only reason I say that's different is, first off, week one, who wants to go do that?
Yeah.
And then college football travel is just different.
Yeah.
I mean, the NFL, they have their processes down to a science. They don't have to worry about their science.
Imagine that game Iowa State and Kansas State. Typically, it's like a bus ride kinda game. Like, you don't even have to fly from one place to the other. And instead, you're flying over an ocean to play.
Either those have Irish roots or something?
I have no idea why it got thrown into Ireland. I didn't see that. Might just be, might just be the deal. But hey, also big football news. Micah Parsons, a Packer.
Yeah.
It's unfortunate.
Also, then the news comes out, yeah, you may need injections in order to play.
Yeah, I'd love to see him just be a bust on the Packers.
I bet you would.
I would. I would love that.
I mean, is, is it gonna be worse than Kenny Clark?
I said, I think Kenny Clark was solid.
He's probably alright.
He was solid.
But I don't think.
He always worked the Vikings offensive line, Garrett Bradbury, their old center, just threw him around like a rag doll.
Micah Parsons is gonna get three sacks against.
I can feel it coming too, the Vikings.
Your backup quarterback, Carson Wentz.
Could you imagine how many jerseys would be sold in North Dakota if Carson Wentz became a Viking like five, six years ago?
See, this is what you talked about last time, buddy.
Oh, I mentioned that on show already? Well, I'm doubling down on that take.
Yeah, yeah. It's been so hot, it's cooled off and he's trying to warm it back up.
A hot take, it's just a.
This is a reheated take.
It's a microwaveable take.
Yep. Yeah. Alright, we'll talk real stuff. So tonight, the city council.
Yes.
Big news on that.
Tuesday, on a September second. It's, it's a Tuesday.
They have some applicants in. And guess what, Kyler? What did you find?
We were looking at the agenda this morning. And on the agenda, it not only has all the applicants' names, but it includes their letters of intent as well.
So we get to read through what these applicants, why they are applying.
Yep.
And I imagine that some of them have fresh perspectives and are deeply vested in this city.
I feel like you saw those buzzwords a couple times in these when we looked through them this morning.
Yep, Chat G P T wasn't very creative this time. Just kidding. I don't think any of them were done with Chat G P T.
I don't think so. They didn't look like that.
There was one handwritten one.
Yeah, that was wild.
It was. I didn't try to read it.
So we might in a second here, but before we get to that, there is another special city council meeting tonight.
So there's a special, there's a executive session?
At three thirty.
Special city council meeting?
At four.
And then regular city council meeting.
At five thirty. Yes, on an off night. It's like us holding the special election in August. It's just a wild.
And there's news about that, too.
Yeah. Let's, so the special session, or well, the first special session that they go into executive, yep. It's to talk about a property purchase here in town. It has to do with the flood project, and I think it's MI six, kinda over on the east side of Burdick there, kinda by the, the bridge by the zoo. So they'll be discussing that in executive session. And then it leads into the four o'clock meeting, which is where the applicants can have a chance to go forward and speak before the council.
You just get like one minute?
I'm not, not sure about the time. So I guess what? It starts at four, the next meeting's at five thirty.
Candidates?
Fifteen divided by ninety is a number. So there we go. They'll all get like five minutes or something.
Minutes, I think.
There you go. Well, we gotta get a little break in between them. So, and they gotta have a time chance to discuss it. So, you know, it'll take a second.
Ninety divided by.
He's doing fifteen.
Is it five?
Six.
Six, you were right, okay. Oh, Zach, are we going live tonight? So we have a Dakotan meeting.
Yeah, we have. We have an executive meeting following our podcast.
To determine whether or not we're going live tonight. So, yeah, originally we were planning on it, and then.
We looked at the agenda.
Looked at the agenda and saw that, like, we'd be here from.
Five thirty to.
Five thirty for sure. Technically, we might should be here at four.
Yeah.
But that wouldn't work. So we'd be here at five thirty and we'd be here till like ten, because it's a long one. So it is undecided.
And the one caveat I have to that, generally speaking, almost every time we try to predict the length of a council meeting.
I hear you, but I feel like we're gonna be right this time.
I think you're right. I agree. I.
Well, let's work through this agenda, then we can take a poll on this.
So, yeah, let's, should we, should we start with the vacancy letters? Or should we start with the council?
What else are we talking about today?
Oh, we'll talk about some Dunseeth stuff. I think we can go into that a little deeper than we did last week. Then we'll go over, preview the agenda for tonight and feel like there's something else.
There's something else we'll figure it out. Anyways, alright, go ahead.
Let's start with the applications. So originally, there was sixteen applicants that applied.
Okay.
One of them had to back out because they haven't been a resident in Minot for nine months. So we're down to fifteen. And those fifteen people are, I mean, it's all public. I don't have any issue with not doing.
They've been already released.
Exactly. A long time ago on the news. So, yeah, first one is Kyle R Erickson. You have Beth Feldner, David Gibson, Joan Hawbaker, Mike Hayes, Kevin Keys, Eric Locken, Dixie Mower, Nikki Paulson, Steve Padrigula, Benjamin Pyle, Roger A. Reich, Hayden Schuler, Connie Wilson, and Melissa Wright. And those are your fifteen applicants. So do you wanna, you wanna preview a few of their letters here? Just kinda go through a few of them?
Yeah.
I feel like we should.
I think it's worth it. So first off, you can grab all this information if you just search Minot City agendas.
Yeah.
City of Minot agendas, I mean.
First or second link.
It'll be, and then click on the event and then in there it has an entire agenda packet. You're able to read everything that the city council, almost everything that the city council members will have up there. And this is one of the things that they have. So again, we're not here doing a records request, trying to.
Yeah, no, nothing like this. This was all public. This was probably posted like Friday or something. And I, I haven't had a chance to look at the agenda till this morning. So.
All public information right here.
Yeah, you, you can all go look at it. And the first one, we'll just start at the top of the list. We have Kyle Erickson. A few paragraphs, he's.
Currently serves as a researcher. I'm jumping in, bro.
You're just gonna dive into the whole thing.
Currently serves as a research associate at the North Dakota Center for Persons with Disabilities at Minot State University. Yeah, he's active in Minot's community life, connected with people from all walks of life through advocacy or through his work in comedy. And he strives to engage people where they are and give them a sense of belonging. And he wants to bring a perspective not currently represented, which is a focus on young professionals with a disability who understands both the challenges and opportunities facing Minot residents. His priorities include making responsible budget, budget decisions, strengthening our infrastructure, and ensuring that Minot's growth is inclusive for everyone. I think one of the most frustrating parts about these letters, and I wonder if the council members will have the same opinion, is you get to hear the overarching statements, which I think is great. Good job, Kyle. It's not a jab at Kyle because a lot of the.
You're gonna notice some tendencies when we're going through these.
And it makes sense because it's this cover letter. But what is a responsible budget decision? Because a responsible budget decision may be spending money, or maybe not spending money.
Yeah, it's incredibly subjective.
Yeah, yeah. And, and that's the bummer part is during a campaign process, you get to go and figure out, okay, this is the priority, responsible budget decisions. And now we can ask questions about that and have it nailed down to what that actually means for that person.
And on the flip side of that, you don't want someone, like, you don't necessarily want someone coming in and giving you a six to eight page.
No, you don't. You can't.
Doctrine of what they plan on doing at that point either. That's just not necessarily.
This is why I, pretty sure I said on last Thursday that, it was either Tuesday or Thursday, that people should start social media campaigns if they've applied.
I agree.
And they should start getting out what they believe.
Start pushing it. I, I fully agree with that. Next up, though, we have Beth Feldner. She has put her interest into the hat as well. Her civic involvement includes service on multiple local committee, committees. She was honored to be, to join the Economic Development Committee as well, which recently completed its work. She's been, you know, and has been present at council in the coming past weeks. I've been, she's been closely involved with major flood control initiatives and actively participated in the Minot twenty forty planning process with city staff, community stakeholders, and such. She's particularly mindful of the importance of ensuring the city council is fully seated and able to move forward efficiently. If appointed, she would bring a thoughtful and engaged presence to the role, remaining committed to listening carefully, asking the right questions, and helping Minot move forward in a responsible, transparent way. I've always believed in showing up, doing the work, and staying grounded in what's best for the community, including digging in to understand the issues, and prioritizing fiscal responsibility and ensuring taxpayer dollars are used efficiently and with intention. Also means being accessible, fostering open dialogue, and recognizing that meaningful engagement often happens outside of formal meetings through everyday interactions. That is Beth Feldner. And just a quick spoiler alert for the end here. She's one of my personal betting favorites coming into this.
Betting favorite?
If, if we were doing betting odds, I would have her towards the top of the list.
If the Blue Rider, we'll have some stuff on the Blue Rider.
Yeah.
If the Blue Rider has a bingo card tonight, do they somehow incorporate all the different candidates in?
I, I think it would be better to do it, council votes six.
The three?
Nothing, three, three, or, yeah.
Yeah, it's a good point. Like, break it down. The council.
Yeah.
And we'll probably repeat this, but the council has three options here.
Yep. Option one, they can entertain a motion to fill the vacant seat for the council member, which they, in theory, could go around the board fifteen times till they figure out, if they figure out a name in that regard. Option two, they can direct staff to prepare a resolution calling for a special election to fulfill the vacancy, which would be that early December election. Or there's a third option. Decline to fill the vacancy of city council member. So.
Do they, so they, if they go, because that's an actual option, so that means that there would be a motion for that.
Yeah.
Alright, so what happens? Do they go and they have one, a, a council member proposes X, Y, Z name, gets a second, they discuss, they vote three, three. Okay, so now another council member proposes another name?
Same thing.
Is that what's gonna happen?
I got a sneaky feeling. And also, what if it's a three, three vote on the special election?
Yeah.
What if it's a three, three?
See, this is why a livestream would be dangerous, because we could be there like, there'd be a straight up filibuster that goes on tonight.
Yeah. There's a chance that that special meeting doesn't get done at five thirty.
Well, there's that, but I think that they might be able to, I bet you they'll have a plan to have that done by five thirty.
I mean, that's the goal, of course.
Alright, yeah, but I'm saying that though, they've thought about the time constraints and all that. They're not gonna probably discuss a ton.
Yeah, you're probably right. I will say this, here's my other bet or thought on the situation. If by some chance there's a consensus on a candidate, I think that's already been reached.
Oh, Kyler, Kyler is getting rumors out there.
This is just pure conjecture and speculation. This is reckless speculation on Kyler's part here. Be warned. But my gut feeling, if, and I stress if, there is a consensus, I believe it has already been decided.
That work? Because that would violate rules and conduct.
Unspoken agreements.
Unspoken agreement. They all went to the city hall and they're like, hmm.
Mind control. Yes. Telepathy. But next up on the list, we went through.
Before that Zach says absolutely is hoping to see more online presence from the applicants. Once names were released, yes, tonight should set some light, but it'll be enough, will it be enough to break a three, three vote?
Yeah, that's the whole thing. Are we gonna actually get through, is there someone that's going to be able to gain a compromise from one of the sides and get a four, two, or five, one vote?
Yeah.
And that's, also with my other point, caveat as well, I don't think that a consensus has been reached. And I, I don't think that's the case.
A consensus has been reached either.
I don't think one will be, but you never know.
There seems to be factions on the city council. Perhaps there's been discussion on that part, but that's about it. Next one, David Gibson with a P.
Yes, Gib, Gibson.
believes that he's a good fit for the role, represents a highly underrepresented group of community members of Minot. He's a blue collar man who recently started working again, been disabled since two thousand and one when he had COVID, moved to Minot in twenty ten with the oil boom. He's been here since then, been involved by bringing the Human Rights Coalition to Minot over a year ago. He has attended city council and library board meetings. Right there, he should get a plus one for attending a library board meetings.
He's doing better than us.
Yeah, as well as meeting a wide variety of community members. He believes the most critical issues the city council is facing at this point are the, or is the two thousand twenty six budget and the inability to make decisions due to the presence of six voting members. This is true.
That's a good call.
He states there's no simple answer to the two thousand twenty six budget. Staff, property owners, renters, and businesses must be heard while also considering that inflation is driving the cost of city services and staff to continue rising. He'll bring a new perspective to the city council, a no nonsense, common sense approach. He can communicate effectively with anyone and understand their perspective. Doesn't mean he'll always agree, but he can at least see their side of the argument and be willing to meet in the middle. He states that he believes he's the right fit due to his diverse background and differing viewpoints from other council members.
And I, I think that's a well put together one. And I was gonna go with something on that, but I forgot. Anyway, so the next one we have is Joan Hawbaker, looking at her letter of.
She didn't really submit one, but she's not gonna be here today.
Yes, she is going to hopefully be available via Teams or Zoom. We'll see how that plays out. After her, we have Mike Hayes, who is sixty one years old and has lived in Minot since September of two thousand and eleven. He was originally from Washington State. He is a mason by trade and has worked in house construction from the ground up for over thirty years, has been involved in some development projects, both in Washington State and here in Minot. Among those notable projects are HUD developments for the Tulutip tribe between two thousand and eight and twenty ten, which included building approximately a hundred and six houses from the ground up, as well as over two hundred and fifty new construction projects here in Minot. In the spring of two thousand and twenty five, him and his wife decided to retire and enjoy life from a business they started together in two thousand and sixteen. With more time on his hands and a wealth of knowledge and experience, he's eager to give back to the community, believing that his diverse background and experience with various projects could make him a valuable asset to the community. That is Mike Hayes, everybody.
Very good. Corey, I see your question, but I do not know what's in regards to, alright dude, you gotta do Kevin Keys.
Oh, this is the handwritten one. So yes, Kevin Keys, he, I guess, I think he lists, he put his resume on there. And then he has the handwritten letter. So I apologize in advance. It's, this one's not just because I'm half blind. Dear city council, my wife is a retired politician in the Philippines. I gave her sound financial advice and helped during the COVID lockdown. Signed, Kevin Keys. Note, while in college, the best I achieved was a hundred and ten percent on my psychology final, plus earned a fifty thousand dollar scholarship from two thousand and thirteen to sixteen.
And then he continues.
City Council of Minot, this is your chance to be a part of history in the making. I have a plan to come up with enough funding for a reverse osmosis water treatment plant, similar to the award winning one Fargo has. If you want to make Minot more than just great, please let me sit in the city council seat that is available. Thank you for your time, Kevin Keys.
Very well. Hey, the only handwritten one. So that's, that's pretty incredible.
That was. I, I don't know why I expected to see more than that, but I thought there'd be more than one, which is.
Handwritten.
I, I don't know why I thought.
They literally had the place on the.
I know. I don't know why I expected more than one. I shouldn't have expected any, frankly.
Yeah. Next up, Eric Locken, lives in Minot for his whole life. Family has lived in North Dakota since eighteen eighty nine. When did North Dakota become a state?
Eighteen eighty nine.
Incredible.
Yes.
Been committed to the city of Minot and the people in it for as long as he can remember. In high school, he participated in building three homes over three years for Habitat for Humanity. Been involved with various projects to help out local citizens from silo auctions and chili kickoffs, chili cook offs, to raise money for Thanksgiving meals for people in need, raising money to purchase new books for children at a local elementary school, and has gone as far as starting a donation drive for goods and monetary donations for Hurricane Harvey relief down in Texas, which he drove down himself from here so could get to the people that needed it most as soon as possible. He believes that the enthusiasm for helping people is what got him the two thousand and twenty two citizen of the year award from former mayor Sean Sibman. He has never shied away from taking the initiative to help anyone or everyone that he could, and truly believes that this is what this community has instilled in him over the years. Minot has always been his favorite place, and it's always made him proud of where he has come from, which is why he wants to be part of this city council.
Love it.
And he also is not going to be at the meeting tonight due to prior scheduling conflicts.
Fortunately, yeah. Then next up, we have Dixie Mower. Let me start by saying, this is her letter, excuse me. Let me start by saying, no, I did not grow up here. However, I got here fifteen years ago and decided to stay after a tragic event. She's lived in different, or they've lived in different towns and states. Feels like they can give a different perspective to our town. I appreciate what Minot has to offer, but it is not being taken care of. There's so many things that Minot has to offer, but it is lacking in some. One thing they would like to do is have a safe haven box at one of our fire department stations. I feel that Minot is a wholesome town and would like Minot to stay that way. They've brought her daughter up to live, and I stayed. I would love to have my granddaughter to be raised here and safe. I am saying that I am going to look out for the town and the children. Sincerely, Dixie Mower.
Alright, next up, this one is a great one.
Yes.
I'm gonna read the first paragraph verbatim. I am Nikki D. Paulson, and I hereby announce my interest and intention to fill the Minot City Council seat vacated by Mayor Mark Jantsch.
So professional.
So professional.
That's a press release right there.
She's an active volunteer in the city of Minot, volunteered with and served on the Board of the Second Story Social Club for Exceptional Persons since nineteen ninety three. She serves on the Human Rights Committee at Calix and is the Financial Secretary, Secretary for her church. Again, I will quote, I am reasonably, reasonably intelligent, moderately active, and wildly entertaining. Just ask me.
It's a mood.
Yeah, well, she sounds like it. She's a fiscal conservative and social libertarian.
That's, I think that's pretty.
Yeah. She does not want to waste tax dollars trying to legislate morality. People do many things in life that she does not like, but that does not mean that those things should be illegal. This is the United States of America. People have the right to be wrong if they so choose. She lives in the second ward of Minot and feels that the working class voter is underrepresented on the Minot City Council. So she would give a voice to the working class and be approachable to listen to people's concerns.
I love it. Next up, in this one, we're gonna have to abbreviate a little bit. It's former alderman Stephen Padrigula.
Yeah, he has, there's ten points on this one. We're not gonna go through every single one. A lot of, a lot of it goes through his.
His knowledge of and basis of experience with the council. He talks about how he's been on council for a total of sixteen years, dating back to nineteen ninety eight at different intermediate, intermediate times.
And I'll say one thing negative on it, which I'm, I'm not trying to pick fights here. There's a couple times where votes are measured in what he says. And I believe the times that they're measured were, first off, in regularly scheduled elections, he measures his votes versus the ones that were received in a special election, which we had amazing turnout for a special election. So that's one thing to consider with the vote totals, is that it was a little bit different in that, in that regard. And the other thing, you'd have to look at is the amount of candidates to compare vote totals as well, because our vote totals got spread out pretty thin because of the, the candidates and you're only voting for one of them.
Exactly. No, it's, it's a great way to put it. And, yeah, he has eleven points on why he'd be a great council member. And again, he by far would be the most experienced and have the biggest base of knowledge of how council works coming into this situation.
Let's pull up when he's served, sorry. He served total sixteen years from nineteen ninety eight through two thousand and two, two thousand and four through two thousand and eight, and twenty sixteen through two thousand and seventeen, representing the third ward, and twenty seventeen through twenty twenty four, representing the city at large. So he has a very huge historical perspective. And he states that his time away from the council has added a different and valuable perspective as well. So definitely one of the most.
Experienced.
Experienced people and ones that if you follow the council, you would probably be most familiar with since he has stated a lot of that experience from behind the dais over the years.
Now, next up, we have Benjamin Pyle, who is leading a, a dream of mine and starting and running the Yoda food truck out there, the Yoda Best Food Truck. His name is Benjamin Pyle, applying for this. He's a bartender at Blue Rider and runs the truck, the food truck, Yoda Best. He is a twenty six year old veteran and is married to an Air Force officer in the seven forty first missile squadron. Although he's only lived in Minot for two and a half years, he's fallen in love with the town and the people. He's an avid member of the community and spends most of his time either attending or working at local community events. Also, he is the host of the city council Bingo at the Blue Rider Bar. Shout out there, Benjamin. We gotta meet sometime. Which has spread awareness at local politics and gotten members of the community more involved in the events that occur on city council meetings. When he saw the position open, he knew he had to apply. He believes the council could more represent the population of Minot with someone who is younger and works in the service industry, knows a lot of service workers around his age, and many Air Force members who are directly impacted by resolutions that this council enacts. I want that voice to see, I want to be that voice that seeks out what the community wants and apply that to his actions if gains council seat. His heart is with the people of Minot, and he wants what's best for Minot.
Very good. We only have four more of these, so we'll be done here and head to break. Next one is Roger Reich. Seeking the open seat on city council, believes that he can bring a fresh set of eyes to the council and help guide the city in the right direction. He has been a part of this community since the mid nineteen nineties and has served on numerous boards throughout his time here.
And next up, we have Hayden Schuler, daughter of friend of the show Miranda Schuler.
Youngest candidate?
Yes, youngest applicant by a fair bit. And she is, after much thought, she just decided to submit her name. She believes she can bring a fresh perspective to our city government. At eighteen, she is the youngest to apply and pursue this opportunity. While she doesn't have decades of experience, she does have something equally valuable, and that is energy, curiosity, and a vested interest in the future of Minot. Her generation will live with the long, long term outcomes of today's decisions. I agree with that, and I want to make sure people have a seat at the table. I see her age not as a limitation, but as a, she sees her age not as a limitation, but as a chance to bring forward new ideas, fresh perspectives, and a lot of drive to get things done. Through her experiences in student leadership, she's learned the importance of listening, building consensus, and working towards solutions that benefit everyone. Sometimes those come in big moments and sometimes in the small ones. Either way, she's learned that leadership is about those you serve. If appointed, she will work diligently to represent all residents of Minot whilst building upon the progress made by those who have served for her, and it would be an honor.
That was a long one. Next up, Connie Wilson. Lifelong resident of Minot with the exception of time that was spent away for college and work as a nanny. Currently serves as the Director of Finance and Operations for the Northern Plains Children's Advocacy Center. In addition to her professional works, she has dedicated much time to volunteering. She has been a volunteer with the Lord's Cup Board Food Pantry for the past eleven years. She has been a volunteer with the Lord's Cupboard Food Pantry for the past eleven years, former member of the Optimist Club, a current member of the Magic City Lions and serves on the Boards of Storm Girls Fast Pitch and the Patient Advisory Board for Trinity Hospital. Dedication uh, to Minot extends back to high school when she completed an internship with the North Dakota State Fair Office as a junior at Minot High. And she has continued to return in various roles every year since then for the fair. This year, she was honored to receive a certificate and pinned commemorating thirty five years of service with the fair. Has excellent networking skills that could benefit the city uh, council, particularly in building positive relationships with local proprietors and business professionals. Much like the missions of the organizations that she serves, both professionally and as a volunteer, she believes that networking is essential to fostering teamwork, strengthening our community and addressing areas of need. She's passionate about the Magic City and its bright future. And feels that she would be a great candidate for this.
And finally, we have Melissa Wright. As a business leader and someone deeply invested in Minot financially and emotionally, she believes she can bring a grounded balance perspective to council. Her work is centered on revitalizing historic spaces, building partnerships and creating experiences that honor our past while serving our future. She's not here to polarize, but believes it's time to heal Minot and not divide it further. Which means listening with intention, leading with integrity and making decisions that reflect the needs of our entire community. As a business owner, she understands firsthand the challenges and opportunities facing our local entrepreneurs and will represent their interests with clarity and conviction. And will work hard to ensure their voices are heard and respected in every conversation. I'm, she's offering her experience, energy and commitment to collaboration, wanting to serve not for recognition, but because she believes Minot deserves thoughtful, inclusive leadership.
Alright, those are the candidates. We're gonna go and kind of give some thoughts on that. Right after the break, we'll be back in about fifteen.
Enjoy Minot's finest authentic Mexican cuisine with a view at Me Mexico. The rooftop patio is open and ready for you to enjoy a margarita or other cool refreshment along with genuine mouthwatering Mexican entrees. Me Mexico, South Broadway.
In the demanding world of oil and gas, precision, safety and efficiency are non-negotiable. Unmanned operator drone services revolutionizes how you monitor, inspect and manage your operations. With cutting edge technology and expert operators, we deliver real time data, detailed reports and actionable insights for our valuable clients. Why risk the safety of your team or waste precious time? Our drones access even the most challenging areas with ease, reducing downtime and enhancing safety across your sites. We take the guesswork out of your projects by offering LiDAR mapping and inspection services so that your projects stay safe, on budget and on time. Unmanned operator drone services. Where technology meets safety, precision and efficiency. Contact us today to elevate your operations. Yes, pun intended.
Aye aye captain.
We are back. Alright, so Paul Strickland says Roger's a great choice, been a leader and the head of Minot Commission on aging, knows dollars and budgets items.
Yeah, that's a great point. Uh, Roger is a big member of the Minot Commission on Aging, which is I think why you might have seen a little bit shorter uh, intention letter there. Uh, he's very familiar with a lot of, or he is very familiar to a lot of the candidates, or not candidates, council members already on board, on, on the council.
Once Kyler gets his words figured out, it'll help.
I'd guarantee nothing with that.
So, I'm the one that's stumbling. Let's go and give a breakdown of these candidates. What, what about your top three? Or first off, are there any ones that should not, maybe like, thank you for applying? For whatever reason, I don't think it would be the best fit. That's a hard one.
Yeah, that's a tough one to go with. I'm, I'm gonna say no, simply for the fact that I think everybody should be able to come forward and apply for this. I, I think.
Yeah, no, I think so, but I'm just saying that they wouldn't be a great fit.
I, I don't know.
That's fine.
I, I don't, no, that's great. I don't think, I think everybody would be a fine fit. How about that?
Well, like thi, this is my opinions. I think Melissa Wright would be a great candidate. I think that in a normal deal, and we've talked about this, in a normal setup, it'd be great, but I think that you have the deal with the um, alcohol ordinance that has to come up. And that's gonna be talked at this city council meeting tonight.
Would that be a, yeah, that is on the agenda. Would that be considered a conflict of interest then?
It feels like right off the bat, you have a conflict of interest simply because they go and they tabled something. And it's really unfair to Melissa, but it, it's something where I think like that's probably gonna be something that is gonna be at least thought about.
That's fair.
Um, stuff like that. You have one that's on the Board of Trinity, on a Trinity Board. And um, Trinity recently is advocating a lot about that new space that was coming and I don't know that there's anything coming up on it, but the new potential emergency room, that would be a for-profit one, that was gonna be on Northwest Minot. And something like that, does that create a conflict of interest immediately? Um, things like that. I think, I, I think stuff like that probably has to be looked at.
That's fair. That's a good point.
Those are, I think those are the only two that I saw where there might be
Some kind of conflicts there, yeah.
That might create a like asteron them as, as uh, their names are going through.
That's fair. I think that's a great point to make there and I, I wanna follow up with that. And kind of give you, rather than my ones I'm not sure about, I wanna give you my favorite ones. How about that?
Well, that's where we're gonna go next. That's fine.
I'm jumping ahead a little bit.
Trying to be positive over here. I was trying to get the negative stuff out of the way so we could go to the positive. Yeah, let's hear it. Let's, top three.
My top three, okay, my top three ones I believe are most likely are my personal top three.
Your personal top three. No one can talk about who we think will win.
Okay, my personal top three, I would have to go with Beth Feldner. I would have to go with Hayden Schuler and Nikki Paulson.
Any, any commentary?
Uh, generally, I, oh, and Benjamin Pyle. I like
Honorable mention. You gotta knock one out, bud. Top three. Gotta knock one out.
Alright, fine. Uh, Nikki Paulson will go to my honorable mention. I'm sorry. I, I appreciate
Cover letter was amazing.
It was. I appreciate and applaud the, the youth of a couple of these people. I, I wanna see the next generation come to leadership. I, I really wanna see the future start to take shape, um, especially with Benjamin and Hayden. However, on top of that, I believe for spec, and I, I would probably vote for either of them in a full term. However, for a six month thing where this requires a lot of heavy hitting and it's time to go from the tonight kind of thing.
Right.
You've, you've got to be able to have that basis of knowledge that is on there and maybe they do, maybe they don't, I don't know. But that's why I will go now transition to what I believe my three most likely are and I think that's
No, wait, wait, you're, you're trading such muddy waters. It's my turn.
You are. Go first. Go, your favorite three.
Favorite three.
I'm sorry, just jumping all over.
I would also go with Beth Feldner. This is really hard, so I would have loved to know more about Joan Hawbaker. We don't do research outside of this. We began to do it. It's hard.
We Googled a couple of names. That's
We did. Well, we Googled, we tried to look them up on Facebook, tried to, but it's really hard to find information on some of these because they're just not there. Um, so it wouldn't be really fair. Um, so I will give, simply because of her fun uh, letter, I'll, I'll, I'll throw Nikki Paulson in there for you.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. I love that Hayden Schuler went and applied. I really hope that she goes and runs because in my personal opinion, and I said this before and I'll say on, while we're live, I feel like it's difficult, this is my personal opinion, okay? So I'm sorry, but this is how I feel. It's difficult to appoint her because, because of her, she's young and inexperienced that. She's young and therefore that means most likely inexperienced. That being said, I think she'd be a really good candidate because there's a perspective that she's gonna bring that would really be beneficial for the council. But I feel like that needs to be better formed. Not, it's, she's already has it formed. I'm not picking on that. I'm saying it needs to be better heard by the citizens. And right now, we don't know what that is. And so I think that's kind of a tough situation to appoint that and then point her at that age and then um, right in the middle of budget and as a citizen, you don't even know where she stands on this stuff. That, that's my like concern, but also I really applaud her for applying and I really hope she runs uh, for the actual election.
That's true.
I hope, I hope that's fair.
Who's your third one?
I know. I don't know. I don't know who my third one is.
Okay.
But I made you cut out one, so I will make myself throw in one and I'm just looking at, at, at names and I'm and I, Benjamin Pyle was one that stood out too. Like, we need to have him on. Um, he's followed it closely. I honestly, I might go with him. There's another one that I'm debating, but I'm not gonna mention his name because I'm not to pull it out. You know, um, but uh, I, I'm gonna go with Benjamin Pyle. And the reason is, is because I really like the fact that he's followed city council. And he has his own views on it and they've, they've been developed and all that, but he hasn't been in the middle. And these, I think like there's this fine line that you're walking and Beth Feldner's been in the middle of a lot of this stuff. And so when you get into the middle of that, then you get other voices that have began to throw stuff at you. Um, whereas somebody like that has followed along, but he hasn't necessarily been in the middle where the, maybe the, those same voices haven't been.
That's fair.
In, in his ears.
No, that's a great point with that and I, I, I subscribe to that. I definitely agree. I, I just wanna see. I, I wanna see them pick someone.
I wanna see them pick
Which is why I'm going to now give you who I think is most likely to be picked.
Yeah, it's probably just one.
I'll, I'll give you two. I, I will give you Beth Feldner, uh, because frankly, the sheer, A, she's familiar with people on council.
Right.
Uh, she has experience in city government to an extent with different committees. And I, I think she puts herself together very well and then
I wanna give one now because I don't want this, because Beth Feldner is one of mine.
Okay.
And so I don't wanna copy you. So I want, I want one.
Okay.
The, the, the one that I think is Roger Wright.
Okay, you took my other one.
That's what I was afraid of.
Was my other one. Okay, so we would have had the same top two regardless.
Roger Rick is all, Reich, sorry. Roger Reich is also a lot of the things that you just mentioned. He's been involved and a lot of people know him.
Yeah.
And so, um, just, there's probably a higher chance of consensus. That's all we're looking for. We're trying to get four votes.
Yeah, with what we're thinking of now, it's, we're not talking about who the best candidate would be. We think we're talking who the most likely in our opinion to be picked is.
Yeah.
And that's where I go from with that. And I will give you an honorable mention for third. I'm gonna give Stephen Padrigula the nod just because of his sheer depth of knowledge on the situation. He has been around for a while and he knows the inner workings of how council works. And if there's one person to jump into the situation, it would be him.
So that's a, that's a wrap on that.
That's, yeah, that was forty, we're like thirty-five minutes of city council applicants tonight.
And that's why it's gonna be very difficult for them to get that all handled in an hour and a half.
Exactly.
One thing that's interesting is there is a very credible rumor going around that there have been signatures collected for a petition for a spe, special election.
Yeah. I assume that'll probably get turned in.
Yep. What's your thoughts on that?
It is
Exactly. You were gonna ask, what does that mean? What does that mean? Because city council came out and said, hey, we, we uh, and it was said in a very professional way, but basically, if you hear Jonathan's interpretation
To paraphrase, yes.
We didn't realize that our city was set up in such a way that we didn't have to do a special election. And now we do. And so we're not doing it.
In essence, yeah, that's what happened.
That's what I heard.
We dug a little deeper.
Those are the words that were said, but
The city of Minot dug a little deeper into the classification of the form of city government we run. And instead of running just a council government, we run a modern council form of government, which allows some different liberties to you know, that you're, the city's able to take. And in that regard, they're able to not take a petition into full accountability and it forced the hand of the city into a special election. They can just take it as a part of the puzzle rather than being the whole puzzle itself kind of thing.
Right. So there's a comment real fast. Deanne says, don't we have a conflict of interest with Roger because he gets taxpayer money for his other job? Yes, there's a conflict. The only thing that's nice about that conflict is that there is precedent for it. So if it was outside of precedent, then you'd be like, hey, um, you better recuse yourself from the vote. But yeah, there is definitely a uh,
A conflict in that regard as well. Yeah. There are potential for conflict there. Yeah. That's a good, great point. And no, I, I can't wait to see how it turns out because I really think that special election might, like the petition might be irrelevant.
Oh, I believe it is.
They might go, I mean, one way or the other. Yeah, they might just
At least the hand is being forced.
Yeah, or it's trying to be.
Well, no, it is. And the fact that, is it going to be ignored or are they going to do something about it?
That's true.
That's the part where it is. And I'll, I mean,
My other brief thought on it is what if they actually choose someone tonight? They pick a candidate, they choose a candidate and then the petition's brought forward. That's, that's another little caveat. I'm sure it doesn't change anything. I'm sure they'll just continue with the person that was selected, but that makes it a little bit more, the, the water a little more cloudy at that point. If they do end up choosing a candidate and then that special petition is brought forward, how do they kind of go forward with it from there?
Right. So, yeah, it's gonna be uh, gonna be interesting to see how it plays out.
No.
Do, do you feel, because, and this is where I understand you cannot take, and it's fun to do it because it really catches people in a, at a bunch of bad situations. You cannot take people's words and use them in other deals because
Context matters.
Context matters. And so one of the things though that we've been hearing a lot is especially on this, alright, let me take a step back. Context matters, but these words are thrown around sometimes too. Because that's what they do at council sometimes, that's my opinion, is they go and they take words that somebody said in one place and then on a different subject where the context is different, they throw those words back at that person.
We've seen a bit of that.
You've seen a bit of that. And so one of the things that we've been hearing lately on sales tax issues is we need to hear the voice of the people on this. And this has not been, this is not one city council person. This has been echoed by several. And so now on the special election, it's, we're gonna take these applicants and make a decision here. And, and, and it's not, um, it's not, I'm sure they still wanna hear the voice of the people, okay? But the point that I'm driving to is if there's a petition, petition that, that is the voice of some of the people. And I, I'm not a fan of the petition personally, be clear, but it definitely puts them in a very
Awkward spot.
Awkward spot where a bunch of roads come together, forged together and how do you go about it?
And it's one of those, even if they're not directly going for it, it's still, it just allows the possibility for hypocrisy to be shouted at them. Not saying that they're being hypocritical per se with the context that matters in that situation, but because of what all leads into it, it will allow people to say they're being, you know, hypocritical at that point.
Right. And, and be for the amount of time that the person's gonna be at it, it just, it makes the most sense to have somebody appointed. And I wanna make it very clear, that's where I stand because I know that that's a very strong hot take to say you want a special election.
But if there is a petition and they don't go forward with the petition, we will definitely talk about that on Thursday.
Yeah, because that has to be talked about whether we like it or not. Uh, Scott Burlington, former city alderman, have been elected in a special election after an appointment myself. I can tell you firsthand that holding another special election in this case would be a serious mistake. It would waste taxpayer dollars and serve no real benefit to the city. Somehow we should have done a contingency on the last elections. If one of these three are elected, who would you?
Yeah, right.
Vote as a, as a city council person.
Man, what a year it's been. A year and change.
Uh, Zach, the only fiscally responsible decision is coming to an agreement on someone tonight. Hopefully that reduces the backlash from ignoring the petition. Absolutely. I agree. I agree. I'm not here to discredit those uh, correct arguments. If people wanna be wrong, they can be.
And now, speaking about council, here's a little just brief overview of the agenda for tonight. You're, you're gonna, yes, drum roll please. We're gonna start, start out with the city manager's report, which has a presentation from the Minot Police Department of their space needs analysis with the current building they're in. So kind of the renovations they'd wanna make in their current facility, the old city hall, and how they'd want that to be done. Following that, then there's the city attorney's report, consent items, which there are not a ton. There's what, fourteen of them this week? Then it gets into the action items, which the first one is the city manager recruitment time, uh, update. There's been what, over fifty people have applied? But like fourteen are kind of qual, legitimately qualified candidates.
Kind of legitimately qualified.
More, more, they, they have identified fourteen of those fifty some. How about that? That's a better way to put it. Then following that discussion, there'll be a talk on the wayfinding entry monument design and contract amendment. Which if we remember, uh, one of the first things we ever talked about on this podcast were the wayfinding signs that were being put up in Minot back over a year and change ago now.
Was not, was that not the first thing?
I believe it was the first thing from Jennifer Queen on episode one, if I shout out.
We've never had her back.
Have we really not?
Maybe one time. I don't think so. We tried to get all three on, but it didn't work out. We need to revisit that.
Jennifer Washington, we gotta, we gotta get ahold of you. Yep. Alright, so then, so this is the next phase of that project.
And she probably has a podcast already released.
Probably a Minot minutia out about this right now. You can probably check it on Facebook or YouTube. I bet it's out by now. Which she does a great job with that as well, getting into the depths of this. And so we're gonna find out the next phase of this project. And it's gonna be a new entrance signs into the city as well as it looks like parking garage signs downtown, potentially.
That way when you see a parking garage.
You know it's a parking garage. You still pre, I won't say it. Uh, next, after that, we have an ordinance modification for storm sewer fees. Oh boy. Then
See, this is such a, such a good city council.
Yeah. I say that in passing and watch, they're gonna spend like twenty minutes on that topic now. Then there's a national opioid settlement, um, with, okay, we can participate in each settlement. If so, they should authorize the mayor to sign the settlement agreements. And any additional paperwork necessary to secure those settlement funds. Interesting. Then there's a contract for the Airport General Aviation HVAC Upgrade Assessment. Oh, so it's just the assessment proposal.
Shouldn't be too long.
No. Then this was an interesting one that I, I, I wanna see. It's the sixth action item. It's the Third Street Bridge Repair Additional Project Scope for Pier Four.
That one probably is gonna decent, be a decent competition.
That, and again, we say that and they'll talk about it for ten seconds. So.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know.
I, I would, I, I also expect though, that there'll be conversation on that.
You can't go south on that bridge.
No, or at least a conversation probably from like city engineer or someone of those lines on the up, update on it.
You can at least drive south on that bridge.
Yes. I, have you?
Yes.
There you go. Um, then the last action item you can, they can approve acceptance of military installation readiness grant from office of local defense community cooperation. I love it. Then of course, as always, there are the always entertaining personal appearances section.
And this could, I mean, on a day like today, I feel like this could be a long one.
Yeah.
You have five minutes each. There could be, if there's like, there could be like three to six people.
Yeah.
Yeah. How many people do you think you get? A range of, range of three.
Like plus or minus three, or you're saying like five to eight?
Yeah. But that'd be, that would not be a range of three. That'd be a range of four.
Four. Yeah. I'll say four to six. Was that you were gonna say? So if you're saying plus or minus three, I was going to take the plus three. I'm saying more.
Four to six. Well, I'm going to go five to seven.
Fair enough. Go one more.
Yeah.
That's why you don't give me the first, first shot at that.
Yeah, I guess it makes, I guess it makes more sense to take a number and take a side on it. So, so like four, are you above or less than four?
I'll go plus four. I would still bet over four.
Yeah, I'm gonna be on the over side on four too.
I, I think, yeah.
We need to, we need to go and find, what we, what we need to do is take an average for like the last, and start tracking this, take an average for like the last three or four meetings, figure out what the averages and then go plus or minus on that.
I think that's fair. That's probably a good, best way to do it. Yeah.
That'd be a fun one for just Thursdays because we always recap it. This is a weird one. We normally are, this is why we never go through city council agendas is because we're always taught.
Talking about what happened. Yeah.
And they're, they're not out on Thursdays.
No, or they, if they are, they're just not till Thursday afternoon. Yeah. After we've gone live. So then after the personal appearances, there's a couple miscellaneous items and one of them, both of them frankly are pretty interesting. And one of them could be very interesting depending on if they select a council member or not. And it's the revisiting of the alcohol ordinance review and re-rate committee recommendations. So it's.
This is the big one. This is the one that's been tabled.
Well, one thing with this though, it's informational only with discussion on the next steps. So don't, don't expect to vote on it tonight. And staff would like direction on whether the city would like to separate the license cap discussion from the remaining discussion on the ordinance itself, of the ordinance itself. So there's a little clarification that needs to come from it, but I would expect to vote probably on that. If not September fifteenth, then what? The first meeting in October, probably.
Definitely when we have a full council.
Yeah.
Cause if there's not a full council, I expect it to be tabled again.
Yeah. Just, I, I agree with that in full. Um, on top of.
But watch them not do that.
They just try to vote on it, goes three, three, and it just gets thrown away.
Yeah. The only reason, and this is, this is because right now, city council in my mind is in a precarious spot. The only reason why that doesn't happen in my mind is because there's a move by people that think they have enough votes to get a three, three vote. And so it, and that means it fails. And that's somebody that wants it to fail.
Yeah, that's possible.
It's possible. I don't know that that's likely, but right now it just feels like, feels like city council is a rough place right now.
Why not?
Yeah. Once we get seven people, I think it's gonna.
Different ballgame.
A little bit, yeah.
Then the final one, there's a public safety sales tax discussion that'll take place. So kind of how, what it would look like if we reworked some of the sales tax dollars into public safety funding. And that'll be an interesting one to kind of have a little bit more of. And I expect then on the fifteenth of September, which is.
That's a big discussion too.
Yeah. Which is where all of the public meetings are going to come from.
Yeah. And the thing that's been weird about this one is it just feels like there's been so much information thrown out on this one. I didn't, I thought that this was going to come up at the September fifteenth meeting. But I guess it's coming up at this one too.
Yeah, they're, they're bringing it back up here. I wonder if they have like some kind of compromise plan they're going to kind of work on with it here. But also one other thing after this meeting is when it really starts to kick off into budget season.
Cuts happening.
Yeah. You're going to start seeing amendments. You're going to see all of the public discussion at the next meeting in September. And then October is when it's all going to really start getting cut and you're going to have to start seeing approvals come to the surface.
And this goes for all your taxing authorities. We hammered this on Thursday when we were talking with somebody from the Ward County Commission. Like realize that, uh, my opinion, Ward County Commission has their budget close to figured out. They're still having to make cuts because of three percent cap. Look at your other taxing authorities.
And.
Look at that school board.
Yep. And when we were talking with Ron, he made a great point saying that because of, you know, they don't have a ton of reserves, but the reserves they do have, they might be able to cover it this year. So they don't have to cut anything major. But coming into next year, that's when, if they don't end up cutting anything huge this year, next year, it's going to have to happen.
Yeah, but I still wonder if it's not worth a place like that, trying and hoping that they can get by for two years.
Just to see what that twenty-seven budget cycle, legislative cycle looks like.
Or maybe if there's a way to suspend operations or cut back operations on something to cut the budget.
Without just wholly shutting it down.
And if it doesn't bounce back, then you have to cut it. If it does, then.
I think that that would be the.
Something. I don't know.
Yeah, that'd be the preferred option if it's doable.
Feels like that's going to come back and we'll get a legislator on. Um, yeah.
Coming up at some point. Yeah. But that's the city council preview. We did that great. That took way longer than I anticipated it taking and I'm proud of that. Also, going in, we didn't expect to see these, the letters there. I ain't gonna lie.
Next step.
You want to talk Dunseeth a little bit or you want to talk some football?
Let's, uh, talk Dunseeth and then we can get that story update that everybody's.
So desperately craving. If you guys are watching this live right now, don't let your computers get it taken away.
Talking to us, evidently one of them got busted.
So, uh, we'll start with the Dunseeth situation. We discussed it a little bit.
Yeah, you gave like a two minute overview.
We talked briefly on Friday.
You've read, so there's like, how big is the lawsuit?
Two hundred and forty.
It's not a lawsuit.
It's, it's a complaint. Yeah. It's a two hundred and forty-six page ordeal, we'll say.
Zach, you're so right. It's so unfortunate watching those who are being conservative are now being punished by the legislature with this cap.
Yeah.
It's.
Yeah.
It's the unthought out portion of this whole, uh, bill that it's so frustrating.
Those who, that are running on a tight budget and with minimal reserves are the ones that are now going to be forced to get the most hamstrung by the situation.
And in my mind, in some conservative people won't agree with me. Um, but it's, it's almost unreasonable what they're trying to do. The part that annoys me the most about it though, is how they get to go and do whatever they want at the state level. And then they impose these caps. That's the part that annoys me the most.
That's the thing. I, I think this whole, I don't think I would have been.
Don't get me started on this.
Yeah, I know. I'm just one final thing before, then we'll discuss Dunseeth a little. I, I just feel like, and again, I would never have agreed with the cap almost generally in principle of capping the municipalities. However, had the state imposed a self-cap on themselves at the state level, I think this would have been a lot more, the bullet would have been easier to bite at that point.
And it's literally basically the response to that is no, the way they had to start looking at cutting services. And it's like, what do you expect?
So now Ward County has to cut the juvenile detention center. But, but it's if the state had, the state can't, doesn't, shouldn't have to worry about any of their stuff to cut.
So Dan, this is exactly what we as homeowners have been dealing with as our budgets are capped as well. I mean, that's, that, but you have the ability to go create new revenue. And your ability to create new revenue may stretch you, may go and make it like.
It might not be physically feasible.
You can get a different job.
Yeah.
You can go, there's things that you can do. Okay. And I'm not saying that it's easy. I understand that every situation is going to be different, but what they're doing here is that, that's why if you're going to do this, measure four is almost the only way to do this. Because it made it where you could make rev, new revenue. Now you cannot make, you cannot make new revenue very well. Unless if you go and start running your city as a business, which is not how the cities or your taxing authority as a business, which is not how it's supposed to be ran. You're not supposed to buy property so you can go turn into an investment and the costs keep increasing. I, the, the, you can probably find cuts, but the point of the conversation is not, can the city find their cuts? The point of the conversation is the ones that ran their um, municipalities conservatively, budgetally, fiscally conservatively. They're the ones that get punished because they've already made the cuts. And now they're having to find more cuts to make. That's, eventually you have to look at yourself and say, am I being unreasonable? With, with some of the tax stuff. There are taxing authorities that are being way out there that need to be brought in. I totally agree, but not every single one is.
No, I, I agree with that. I think it's imperative that they keep it within a certain level of, you know, reasonable, reasonableness, but also like, hey, come on, we, we can't just be completely.
And, and what's interesting to me is that there's not any outrage. The only outrage that comes is at the local places. Get some outrage at the state.
Yeah, that's where this all stems from.
There's twenty billion dollars that they're spending each year. If you get them to cut their budget by five billion dollars, that's going to have a trickle down effect. If you get them to go and take five billion dollars cut and give it back to the taxpayers through actual tax breaks, then that's going to do something.
And one really interesting thing too, that I mean, we've talked about, but maybe never directly is how this has impacted Minot's budget this year. And the fact that it's allowed the city to take a budget from two years ago and be the baseline. So now it's effectively raising our budget from last year.
Right, yeah.
And it's completely allowed.
Technically legal because it.
It's in the wording of the bill. You can take any of the last three years of, as your baseline budget. And now city of Minot has decided to take.
A fiscally conservative, uh, municipality wouldn't be able to do that because they've been that way for years.
Exactly. When we finally were able to cut stuff last year and now we're pretty much going to be awash this year from, with last year.
Yeah, it's, it's insane. It is, it is not, it's not that. And I think I want to say this and then we can move on. And if you need to say something, that's fine. But I'm just want to clarify my viewpoint on it. It's not that I'm upset about the idea that we're saying, hey, we gotta stop spending. That's not the problem with it. It's just the unreasonable idea that you're able to throw a three percent cap on it and call it good without actually looking at how that's going to affect the different type of municipalities. Because every municipality is going to be affected by that differently. But the state said, we're going to go and increase our budget. And you guys can go and figure out how to live under a three percent cap where, oh, you went and you brought down your taxes last time. That's all right. You can bring it back up. That's fine. We don't care. Three percent cap. Oh, you've been physically conservative for the last 10 years? Sorry, you're going to have to cut something because that's, it's a three percent cap buddy. Like that's the logic that was thrown in there and that is completely unfair, um, to the, um,
to the state as a whole.
And it's going to be unfair to the citizens eventually. And we talked about this a little bit with commissioner, uh, Ron Merritt. Like you go and you cut something off your budget? Great. Good job. Next year, find something else to cut.
That's, yeah, that's what it's turning, turned into.
That's what it will turn into because, and then, so then you're going to cut wages. Well, a three percent raise is hardly anything. And you're going to have to be below a three percent raise in order to be below the cap. That's the part that does not make sense at all.
In order to keep wages equitable, you would have to start cutting massive amounts of services aside from them.
Right.
To make it a wash effectively.
So eventually literally you're going to have to start cutting people. Like that's the only option. But the problem with it is you can cut somebody and then the next year you have to do it again. And I guess a three percent deal will protect you for like three years and then, and then you're.
So every couple of years, you're going to have to cut another person.
Right.
Kind of thing.
So it's just, it, there's gotta be a.
There's gotta be some kind of a middle ground here.
Yeah. At, at least increase it to like double to six percent. I think that would be.
Yeah. Or some kind of a rate. Yeah.
That doesn't even allow for growth. It's, it's a whole, and perhaps I understand the argument there. Well, the growth would come as you had more things come on the tax. Well, I, and I hear that and I understand that. There's probably more of a conversation that can be had on that particular topic of it, but it just seems very, very overly limiting.
And I'm sure in the next year and a half, we will have that discussion at some point. But first, we're going to have a little bit more of a deeper discussion on Charles Hofer's situation up in Dunseeth.
I agree with a lot of what you're saying there, Zach. Go ahead. Let's move to Dunseeth.
Yes. So Dunseeth, it was Thursday, August 27th. It was official that the two hundred and forty-two page complaint was filed in US District Court by Charles Hofer and the Hofer Group. And they are seeking a jury trial for damages arising from the alleged deprivation of rights, conspiracy to interfere with civil rights and forced labor by officials with the North Dakota Department of Commerce. And the key thing here is buy officials for the Department of Commerce, not buy the Department of Commerce itself.
Right. That's huge. So two hundred and forty-two pages, you read through most of them, right? Scam through some, whatever, whatever you had to do. You got through two hundred and forty-two pages.
Last weekend, it was a, it was boring.
Kyler's a legend around here. All right.
Charles Crane really did, is the legend.
Be sure to check that out. Minot Daily News. He's, uh, definitely following this along now, uh, Charles Crane or the Minot Daily. All right. So you were identifying a key point there between who this is being filed against.
Yeah. It's not the, he's, he's not suing the Department of Commerce. He's not suing the state of, in any capacity. He's suing the individuals that work for those departments for exploiting their offices effectively.
And the reason why this is important is because if you sued the state directly, then, um.
The damages are capped at a certain amount.
Damages are capped and it affects his relationship with his loan, which is.
Yep.
All that too.
Nope.
And for some of that context, you can go listen to those podcasts that we did with him.
Yes. And if you want, I, I honestly think it's one of the ones that got the least traction. It was the last one we did with him this like March, where he discusses some of the inconsistencies described or explained by commerce. And those development officials where the, there's emails saying one thing, and then you'll have recordings of them saying a completely different thing. I think that is one of the most telling ones in this regard for a lot of this lawsuit. So again, it's obviously dating all the way back to, you know, twenty fifteen, when Benchmark originally closed, the old company, manufacturing company that worked there. There were, from then until twenty twenty-two, when Mr. Hofer officially purchased the building. He was led to believe that there was nothing being done in the building. It was empty, vacant, et cetera. When in reality, there was at least one full company that operated out of there for about a six month period. And on top of that, another subcontracting company, that Chiptronics we've discussed in the past, that certainly operated out of there at different times, if not continuously from twenty, end of twenty fifteen through twenty twenty-three. And there's some questions about when, where, how that happened, but for a fact, we know because of the parts that were found there, this isn't stuff that was left over for seven years. This is stuff that was still actively being worked on in that timeframe.
Right.
And now he is suing those five officials for one point eight nine billion dollars, almost two billion in damages.
Wow.
And that is for lost revenue, uh, loss of, um, not exposure of personal reputation. Yeah. Reputation, credibility, um, and losses of industry standards as well. And so this is stuff that he's looked at competitors that have been in business from around the same time he would have started manufacturing. And revenues generally, if it's successful, look to be well over a billion dollars in this, you know, three, four year timeframe at this point. So he's able to safely assume that this is the number that can come to fruition and.
When you look at some of the stuff that they did, the, a lot of the focal point would be them freezing the loan. And he's like.
Freezing it, unfreezing it and then freezing it again.
And he was able to get other financing options, but as long as that loan was frozen, they wouldn't fully look at them because it was not a good investment for them. And the amount of times that the Commerce Department freezes loans is like one out of all the loans that they've ever given.
Yeah, it's a very minimal process, something that you don't see happening very often. Also, they accused him of misusing funds, but to this point have still never put any real backing behind where that misuse came from. It never solidified what they say that misuse was, just that he was misusing funds. Um, they allege that even though he was told to use those funds for remediation after the parts were discovered, they're alleging that some of that is where the misuse comes from. So it's, it's a confusing situation for a fact.
When he has documentation for everything that happened.
That's the thing though. He has all of those email conversations and a lot of that is available at mydakota.com. So if you are interested, make sure you go check out the Dunseeth debacle evidence dump we have on there. You can check out all five podcasts, six total podcasts we did with Charles, uh, five of them pre-recorded. We did one live where we have state legislators and also a couple of AV, national aviation experts on.
Ed Pearson, Joe Jacobson.
Yep. In which we discuss the potential national implications for the, the parts manufacturing that was likely going on there.
And that, that was an underwatch episode, but those names are huge. They are Boeing, have connections to Boeing whistleblowers. Been on major, uh, broadcast networks.
Yeah, have, have testified before the Senate and Congress multiple times. Uh, these are people. And even at the beginning of this year, following that interview we did with them at around March timeframe, they sent a letter to the national, the NTSB director saying that this, this situation should be looked into. And as far as I know, nothing ever came of that either.
There's no traction.
Unfortunately.
And because there's, there's layers to this and now we're going deep and we're like filling in people as though they've never heard of it. There's the, there's two, really two.
Two separate branches of the situation.
There's one against the North Dakota government, basically where perhaps, uh, things were not treated properly with the loan and how all that worked. There's a separate branch that is the materials that were actually at the office where, um, where, uh.
The, the gyroscopes that were found there. And what if they were manufactured there? How they were likely manufactured in an unsafe, uh, non-static free environment, which things like this, having so many microchip small parts need to be manufactured in a static free space. Um, and if that is the case, how, if they were either manufactured or cleaned in that situation, th- this is something that needs to be likely remediated on a national level where these things can never be guaranteed for their full, you know, I don't want to say safety, but full effectiveness is probably the better situation. And you've looked at some of the situ, uh, And you've looked at some of the situ, uh, flight accidents and incidents that have occurred over the last couple of years. And it raises a lot of questions with how these have progressed as well. And you know, it might just be coincidental, but it certainly allows for the thought to come. Of where did this all stem from? And then like John, and that's, that's the national aviation side. These parts that are also that were found, something that are considered ITAR, which is. Effectively a classified part that is only allowed to be manufactured by select manufacturers in the US and not outside. And there's documents that show these were potentially shipped to places outside of the US. There's not necessarily hard proof, but a lot of. You know, evidentiary suggestions that that's what happened. And you. Then look at the state side of it and you have to wonder, is there, what Hofer is alleging that there was conspiracy going on behind the scenes. To pretty much silence him and force his hand out of the situation or to force him to take the fall for the situation. Or was it just a level of incompetence that is wholly embarrassing and unjustified?
For sure. Very interesting, man.
Yeah, it's crazy dude. It's finally here. We did it. City council night. It's weird. It's Tuesday. Charles Hofer finally filed the lawsuit like almost six months later.
Yeah.
And I, exactly. Things are, things are good.
Things are good.
Now we're gonna just talk about if we're gonna end up going live tonight or not when we get done here and. You got anything else you wanna, you wanna discuss before we call it a day?
Yeah, Surrey football.
Oh, yeah.
Two minutes, man.
Yeah, okay, it's easy. So our second game was on Friday. We were playing Berthold. And really close game. We won the turnover battle. It was two, 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 nothing. We had a pick fumble recovery. We got the ball in some good positions. We just on offense, we had some dumb penalties, some bad snaps that kind of hosed us over and.
What was the final score?
So I'm getting there. With about three minutes left in the game, score is six to nothing. We're down.
You're down six oh.
Yep. And and we get the ball back.
You get the ball.
Defense forces a punt. So we get the ball back.
Defense was on fire.
We, yeah, it was. We gotta go like probably 80, 85 yards to score.
Wow.
But we got the ball back and we got timeouts. So it's like, we got a chance here. Let's get her going. We don't get her going, but it was so close, so close. On third down, we had a pass play drawn up. And we had this one little fast kid. We call him the Flash. He, he wears red shoes. It's perfect. And he burned his cornerback and the safety and he was back. He was deep. We had it. Our quarterback, he's a lefty. He launched it. And he's got everyone beat. It's going. And the safety just jumps up, extends out, gets like the tip of his middle finger. It was a good throw. It was gonna hit him right in the bread basket. He was gonna have no one in front of him to run for a touchdown.
Elite play.
But the safety just extended, like got his middle finger on it and tipped it and it went incomplete.
Needed every bit of his extension. That's incredible, man.
It was great.
That's awesome.
It was so close.
Six oh, defense.
So then they scored, they scored again then.
Oh, then they scored.
Cause they had the ball on like the 15 yard line or something.
So final score is like 13 oh or something.
14, yeah. We don't kick extra, we don't kick extra points in junior high nine man football.
So 14 oh final score, but six oh for when it mattered.
Exactly.
When is the defense gonna start scoring points, I guess? Cause it wasn't over when you guys gave the ball back.
We almost, on that fumble recovery, we almost took it to the house. It was so close. Got a couple of kids that really like to hit. It's gonna be exciting. I can't wait till next week. We're gonna win.
We'll continue, uh, we'll continue following.
Kyler's coaching corner.
Yeah, that's awesome. Love it. Coach Kyler, it was good talking with you.
No, it's always great to be here, Jonathan. Thanks so much for having me.
Absolutely.
Like I'm a guest.
This is a wrap on this along.
Yeah, we went over.
Podcast minute, hour fifteen. So be sure to tune into city council tonight starting at 4pm. I mean, you could do 3:30, but you'll get a bunch of silence.
Yeah.
Uh, but 4pm is when big things start kicking off.
And if we're not live tonight, you will see us recapping this on Thursday.
You will. So thank you for watching this episode. Be sure to like and subscribe, join that Deco and community, ever growing, always having a good time.
Forever.
Thank you for watching. Have a great day.